Call the meeting to order at 6:21 PM. Do you have any? Sorry. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God in the individual liberty and justice of all.
Wait a minute, we have roll call first. We have roll call, please.
Student trustee Malik.
Here.
Student trustee Migliaccio.
Here.
Trustee Withrow.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan.
Right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk. Trustee Johannes.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Here.
Trustee Quinlan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item, can we have the affirmation of statement of cooperation, please?
The Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees is committed to our effectiveness as a board. Through an annual self-evaluation and the establishment of meaningful goals, we dedicate ourselves to functioning as a high-performing team on behalf of the people we represent in helping students reach their educational goals. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. The full statement of cooperation is attached to this agenda item, but in summary, we commit to, number one, building trust and seek to understand each other; two, be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols; three, model the behavior we want others to exhibit.
Thank you, trustee Johannes. Counsel, do we have a report out in closed session?
Yes, President. In closed session, the board considered an appeal of an administrative determin- In closed session, the board considered an appeal of an administrative determination involving a complaint against an employee. On a motion by trustee Gonzalez Euan and a second by trustee Withrow, the board voted seven zero to affirm the administrative determination and deny the appeal in appeal number twenty-five twenty-six dash six. Trustee Quinlan, trustee Gonzalez Euan, trustee Gonzalez Brito, trustee Johannes, trustee Delphine Polk, and trustee Withrow voting yes. I also need to make a correction to the report out from our last board meeting. At the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting, the board considered an appeal of five, not six, administrative determinations involving complaints against employees. And on a motion by trustee Gonzalez Euan and a second by trustee Reese, the board voted to affirm the administrative determinations and deny the appeals in appeals numbers twenty-five twenty-six dash one, dash two, dash three, dash four, and dash five. And the report out on that, the roll call vote on that was trustee Quinlan, trustee Gonzalez Euan, trustee Brito, trustee Johannes, and trustee Reese voting yes. Trustee Delphine Polk abstaining and trustee Withrow absent. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Gonzalez Euan and second was made by trustee Johannes. Can I have the roll call, please?
Student trustee Malik.
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Prove the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the August twenty-sixth meeting?
Sure.
Second.
Trustee Withrow made the motion and trustee Gonzalez Euan made the second. Any discussion? I have a roll call, please.
Student trustee Malik.
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can we have a report from the Associated Student Government?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amaya Maraisa and I serve as the Associated Student Body President at Berkeley City College and I'm pleased to share my report with you all today. This summer began with a district-wide training at Merritt College. It was a wonderful opportunity for ASBCC to connect with student leaders from across the district. Following that, we held our own campus-wide training where we not only built stronger bonds as a team, but also took a deeper dive into Robert's Rule of Order and the Brown Act. As the semester began, BCC hosted a welcome week that gave us a chance to table, meet students, and share the purpose of ASBCC. We also helped students with club charter applications and applications for open ASBCC positions during that time. We held our first official ASBCC meeting last Thursday, September fourth, and I'm excited to share that during the meeting, ASBCC voted on the appointments of our new chief justice and four justices, who will serve for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-sixth academic year at ASBCC. With these additions, our board is now complete with over eighteen board members. It is inspiring to see so many students stepping into leadership, serving both on campus and on district-wide committees. We have also been busy approving club charters. As of today, over twenty clubs have been successfully chartered, representing a wide variety of interests, including cultural, faith-based, social, and academic groups. The diversity ensures that every student has a place to belong at BCC. Looking ahead, ASBCC is partnering with the dean to host Constitution Day on September seventeenth. ASBCC will have a voter registration table and share information at the atrium about the upcoming November fourth election. We will be live streaming the documentary called the Constitutional Convention from eleven AM to one PM in the auditorium. And to end the event, we will host a fun Constitutional Day Jeopardy game with free pizza and popcorn for participants. That is all for my report today. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. If we haven't met all, had the pleasure of meeting-
Good evening, everyone. If we haven't met all had the pleasure of meeting already, my name is Owen Flaherty, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Associated Students of Laney College. I want to begin by thanking each and every one of the trustees for your continued support, but I'd especially like to express my gratitude to my trustee as a resident of Albany, Mr. Ewan, and thank you both for your hard work and dedication. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the Associated Students of Laney College. Over the past few weeks, I, along with the current members of the ASLC, have had the privilege of appointing students to the previously vacant positions on our council. I am proud to report that all of the vacancies have now been filled, and we are energized and ready to engage on all levels of our district's governance. Over the last week, I've completed the appointments to all Laney College, all of Laney College's committees, and I've submitted my recommendations to district-level committees, which are currently under review by the student trustees. As for our broader student body, I am excited to share that Laney College feels more vibrant than I've ever seen it. There are more students on campus than anyone has ever experienced since before COVID, and their presence has brought with it a more joyful and connected campus culture. These small but meaningful victories are what build a sense of community, the kind that draws students in and keeps them coming back. These students, with their presence, ensure the longevity of all of our campuses and especially Laney College. This progress would not be possible without the guidance from you, the trustees, and our on-the-ground, all of those working for our district. To the classified professionals that keep our campuses running, the faculty that work tirelessly to grade our papers turned in two weeks overdue, and the administrators who facilitated all, thank you. Without your commitment, Laney College would not have access to the quality education they deserve. As we look ahead, I'm excited for the year to come and work we will do together. I have set it as my personal goal to facilitate the growth of a more engaged student body, and I hope that my future updates will highlight the culture that sets Laney apart and the progress we are making together as students. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three point nine, Peralta Classified Senate Report. Is there any representative from Peralta Classified Senate?
Greetings, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Gilkerson, Administrative Leadership, and Community Members. It is with pleasure again that I present you with the following Campus Senate Reports and Peralta Classified Senate Report. The College of Alameda Classified Senate will kick off its first Classified Senate Meeting on September twenty-sixth in room H-151 from eleven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. A Zoom link is available for the Zoom attendees. We encourage classified professionals to attend our general Senate meeting as we move towards starting the academic year in the spirit of collaboration, community, and collegiality. Committee appointments have been identified for our College of Alameda shared governance committees, and we are ready to represent classified professionals by proactively providing input from a classified perspective that will be essential to the functions of College of Alameda and will become an asset in making informed decisions that will benefit our institution and our students. Finally, the Senate will set our short and long-term goals that we look forward to implementing and sharing our progress throughout the academic year. The next report comes from Merritt College. Merritt College's classified professionals worked diligently during the first two weeks of the semester to support students through the matriculation and onboarding process. Staff collaborated across multiple service areas to ensure a seamless experience for students as they began their academic journey. Following the recent Flex Day presentation, some classified professionals have expressed caution regarding the anticipated pruning process associated with the transition to Oakland City College. Despite these concerns, classified staff still remain steadfast in their commitment to building community with access and equity at the forefront. This includes continued outreach to feeder high schools and the expansion of basic needs services across the campus. Additionally, classified professionals who have shifted roles to help minimize the operational impacts from the reduction of workforce have proven to be valuable additions to their new departments and service areas. Efforts are underway to ensure smooth onboarding of these roles and responsibilities. At the same time, the college is actively re-advertising positions vacated by retirements to ensure service areas remain equipped to meet grant, college, and district objectives. Overall, Merritt College's classified staff continue to demonstrate resilience, adaptability, and dedication to student success and institutional goals. And finally, the Peralta Classified Senate. The next Peralta Classified Senate General Meeting is scheduled to occur on September eighteenth from three o'clock to four thirty PM via Zoom. We encourage classified to attend our next meeting as we further work to finalize our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six goals and determine initiatives that will increase classified participation district-wide with an outcome of shining the light on Peralta and the supportive services we provide, the academic opportunities of excellence that we offer the communities we serve, and our commitment towards putting students first. As classified Senate representatives, we advocate for the needs of classified professionals, but we also produce meaningful contributions that align with the district's mission and student success. Isn't student success the reason why we are all here? Classified professionals have a unique perspective on operational functions within Peralta and can provide expertise to improve services that support a student's educational experience. Therefore, we are committed to actively participating in shared governance to ensure that the voices of classified professionals are heard in decision-making processes through representation and advocacy, all while fostering working relationships with each other and other constituencies under Board Policy seventy-three, eighty, ethics, civility, and mutual respect. Therefore, we ask and encourage all classified district-wide to find their voice and empower the Classified Senate with their input and support at our next general meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a report from our District Academic Senate?
Thank you, President Quinlan, the esteemed members of the board, Madam Chancellor, college presidents, and the assembled members of the chancellor's cabinet. My name is Tom Renbarger, and I'm the vice president of the District Academic Senate, and I'll be filling in for President Leslie Blakely, who is unable to make it tonight. The District Academic Senate had its first meeting of the year last Tuesday on September second. It happened in advance of three of the college academic senate's meeting. Laney had met earlier in the day, so this meeting was largely an orientation meeting in which we addressed kind of the goals and priorities of the upcoming year for the District Academic Senate. One thing that I can report is that DAS president Blakely is holding input and innovation sessions across the campuses. She will hold an office hour in person at one campus each week per month. The times for that are Laney College is the first Wednesday of each month. Merritt College is the second Tuesday of each month. And I should say Laney is Wednesday one thirty, two thirty, first Wednesday. Merritt is the second Tuesday from twelve thirty to one thirty. COA is the third Wednesday from two to three PM, and BCC is the fourth Tuesday from twelve thirty to one thirty PM. I happen to be at today's session at Merritt along with Dan Lawson, Rebecca Ullman, and Lowell Bennett, all of whom are members of the Math and Physical Science Department at Merritt College, so I would like to commend my fellow departmental faculty for their engagement, which I think is a combination of just the size of the department and also the fact that we had someone who was active in participatory governance or shared governance when we first were on board. That was Taysoo Park, who was the Academic Senate President of Merritt when I was there my first year. And I would encourage faculty across the district and also faculty from other departments at Merritt College to attend these sessions and bring forward any concerns you have from the faculty perspective to DAS plus president Blakely. The meeting that we had today, I think it's fair to say that there were concerns about curriculum and articulation in anticipation for a possible reunification between Merritt College and Laney College into Oakland City College. The way I've phrased it is that the great control number bomb is ticking because we need a distinct control number for every new course that we will offer. At least that's if we follow ed code as written presently. So I know that's still a ways off, but time has a way of getting behind us fast, so I think we should think about that. The other thing that came up is that there was some skepticism about the economic case for reunification, so it is no longer my position to formally recommend agenda items to PBC, but I think it would be a great agenda item to just sort of run down the economic case for reunification at the September PBC meeting, if at all possible. Some of these issues, also other issues that came up included better coordinated scheduling, and then the melding of the curricula will also impact scheduling at COA and BCC. And the scheduling issues are probably something that are worth solving regardless of whether there's unification or not. So we'll proceed under the assumption that there will be for now, but regardless of that, the scheduling issue and just sort of less overlap between schedules is definitely something worth looking into. The college senates have met in the meantime, and DAS will next meet on September sixteen, and we look forward to partnering with the other constituency groups on the work of reunification and everything else that goes into shared governance. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have public comments on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments for tonight?
No, Board President.
Okay. Move on. Item three point one-two. Chancellor will now hear your report.
Thank you, Board President Quinlan. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I hope everyone had a nice Labor Day celebration following our last meeting. It's been a whirlwind of activity following the three-day weekend. On September second, the Peralta Community College District at Merritt College held a wonderful ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new horticulture complex. It was a proud moment for all of us, funded by the generous support of our community taxpayers through Bond Measure G. The project is a perfect example of our commitment to growth. As I said at the ceremony, we are planting together. Just as growth in nature doesn't happen all at once, this complex is a vital new resource, like the soil, water, and light, that will allow new ideas, talents, and futures to take root and flourish for our students. I was so glad that Board President Louis Quinlan and trustees Nikki Gonzalez Ewan and Shuwee Johannes were there to see our new space, as well as Oakland City Council President, former mayor, and former Peralta trustee Kevin Jenkins was present. I want to thank President David M. Johnson and the Merritt College team, including Marie Amboy, Tara Marrero, and the Horticulture Faculty, including co-chairs Laura Florin and Chris Grant for hosting such a lovely event. I also want to thank Greg Nelson, Amy Marshall, and our partners involved with the project, including Knoll and Tam Architects, Kitchell, Thompson Builders, AECom, and Lowell Consulting. It was a lovely event with our amazing community in a beautiful location on a gorgeous summer day, all of which left me with a heart filled with gratitude. On Friday, September fifth, over seventy leaders from across the district gathered here in the atrium for our Fall twenty-twenty-five Shared Governance Summit. The group included faculty, classified professionals, administrators, and students. I'm especially proud that so many student leaders attended, including student trustees Ayann Malik and Leo Migliaccio. My thanks to them for reaching out to associate student leaders from the colleges to make sure students are represented. I'm so excited for us to be using the shared governance and appreciative inquiry approach to thoughtfully align our resources with areas of greatest interest and need for students. I see this as a chance to prune to grow, creating space for new opportunities in course and program assessment, evening and weekend instruction, and support, distance education, dual enrollment, and concurrent enrollment. Our Student Success and Enrollment Management Committee will be investigating course and program assessment and the concept of evening and weekend college. We're creating three special task forces that report into the Planning and Budget Committee to investigate and make recommendations for distance education, dual and concurrent enrollment, and unification across the district. I want to thank Dr. Leslie Blakely, the District Academic Senate President, and Ms. Tishetta Henry, the Peralta Classified Senate President, for their help in planning the summit. We plan to have our next summit at the end of February with each committee and task force presenting their findings and recommendations. It's going to be a very busy fall semester, but our work is intentional and full of purpose. Yesterday, the Peralta Colleges Foundation hosted the annual Dr. William Bill Riley Swing for Student Success Golf Tournament at the Sequoia Country Club in the Oakland Hills. What a day! I'm pleased to report that this year the tournament sold out with a hundred and forty-four golfers, supported by sponsors and volunteers, out on the eighteen-hole course, and a great time was had by all. At the start of the day, Dr. Riley, former trustee, who now serves as the chair of the foundation board, announced that we'd raised two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, far more than last year's record of two-hundred K, and suggested a new goal of three-hundred K by the end of the day. It's going to be close, but I think we almost got there. The golfers were generous, making donations on the course, and after dinner, I got to serve unexpectedly as auctioneer over some fierce bidding wars over donated gifts, including a case of wine and a jersey autograph by Steph Curry. I want to thank our generous sponsors, including DHE Computer Systems, Future Flooring Group, PG&E, Alton Construction, WR Ford, Kitchell, and many others. Of course, a big thank you goes to the Event Planning Committee, including Chair Mahari Wise, co-chairs Dr. Bill Riley and Gail Pendleton, event coordinator Margie Platero, and all of the incredible volunteers from across the district and community. Great job, team. I also want to thank Board President Quinlan, CEO Nelson, the college presidents, and all the Peralta staff who make a successful event. Thank you. Our next big foundation event is coming up on Saturday, October eighteenth, at the Merritt College with the Peralta Pumpkin Pursuit, a five-K run-walk. There's a link to register on the Peralta homepage or simply key in peralta.edu/5k in your browser to sign up for the fun. I'll be out there on the course. I don't know how fast I'll be running, and here's an example of that sticker that we'll be doing. Award medals will look like this around your neck when you finish, so pretty exciting. There will be another day of friendly competition and raising funds for what? For the students. And that concludes my chancellor's report for this evening. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you, Chancellor. Item four point one, first reading of board policies. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to the next item. Review of administrative procedures, item four point two. Any discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to the next item. Approval of all consent items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Gonzalez Ewan and second by Deanna Polk. Any discussion? Call the rule.
Student trustee Malik.
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
You have a motion passes.
Thank you. Item nine point one, Chancellor.
Thank you, Board President. So in July of twenty-twenty-one, the Board of Governors of the California Community Colleges adopted a new equal employment opportunity, EEO regulations, to provide a necessary framework for more robust and accountable EEO programs. As you've had before, we've done reports to the boards for our annual certification that is reporting our EEO-related activities in order to receive EO funds appropriated by the legislature. I'm excited tonight to have our director of- I'm excited tonight to have our Director of Employee Relations, Andrea Epps, here to present to you tonight.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, student trustees, Chancellor, staff, and community. This evening, I have the pleasure of presenting our second annual EEO Equal Employment Opportunity Annual Certification. First, I would like to give a little background on what an EEO annual certification is, as this is only the second year that districts have been required to complete this type of form. Each community college district is required, under Title V, to have an EEO plan in place. Back in October of 2024, this board approved an EEO plan consistent with Title V. An EEO plan is a written document that analyzes the district's workforce and identifies the ways in which it will ensure equal opportunity in employment for both job applicants and employees. The district is required, under Title V, to not only adopt a district-wide EEO plan that will cover a three-year period, but also review the plan and assess the progress towards meeting its identified goals. The EEO plan that was approved last year was the district's first EEO plan under the new regulations, which modified the approval process for EEO plans and required substantive components to be included in each plan. So a little bit of background. The current EEO plan had to be submitted to and approved by the State Chancellor's Office prior to our board's adoption. Accordingly, our EEO plan was submitted to the State Chancellor's Office for their feedback and approval. After the district received minimal feedback from the State Chancellor's Office, the plan was submitted to our Participatory Governance Council, and then it was submitted to our Board of Trustees. The district's plan was approved by our board on March 12th of 2024, so we have been implementing it for just over a year. When I came to present the EEO plan to the board back in March of 2024, you may remember that we spent some time discussing the impact that new Title IX regulations would have, not only on our development of our EEO plan, but also on the ongoing monitoring process. So compliance reporting under the new regulations requires that after an EEO plan is approved for a three-year term, the district must complete annual certifications regarding their progress with implementation of their plan. One of the key changes in regulations included a new component, Component 13, which sets forth pre-hiring, hiring, and post-hiring strategies that will be utilized to address any adverse impact, underrepresentation, and generally enhance EEO efforts within the district. Component 13 is reviewed annually as part of our annual certification process. Prior to the new regulations, the district would previously only complete a multiple-methods allocation form, not an annual certification. The multiple-methods allocation form was not part of this robust and current annual certification process. Further, the multiple-methods allocation form was completed and certified by representatives of fiscal services and employee relations. So the previous process was not as robust, nor did it require that we bring it to the board. This is why this is just the second time this annual certification is coming to the board as part of our monitoring process. The new annual certification has six sections. Although the certification form was modified again earlier this year, it is similar to the form that was presented to the board last year. It has the same number of sections, and we'll walk through each of these six components. The first section of our annual certification is the Certification Components Checklist. This section requires that we certify we've done the following. We've recorded and reviewed applicant and employee data. We've reported the required data. We have identified updates to Component 13, or the EEO strategies that the district identified in Component 13. We report on responses to harassment and discrimination complaints. And we've used EEO funds in accordance with the regulations. This is a simple checklist where we're certifying that we have completed all of the components of our annual certification, which we will run through individually. Section B requires that the district certify that it collects and monitors applicant and employee demographic data, and then report this information to the State Chancellor's Office as part of its annual certification in a prescribed form. When the EEO plan was approved in March of 2024, one of the commitments that the district made was to engage an independent consultant to prepare the highly-specific data analysis that was now required under Title V. The district engaged an independent consultant and received an executive summary and data analyses that were included with the board item for last year's annual certification. While the actual comprehensive data analysis are not a component of our annual certification, the specific data sets that are required under the annual... There are specific data sets that are required under the annual certification that are impacted by the previously provided information. So we'll be referencing the summary that appears on the left side to the board so that we have a better context of the data that is being reviewed. So the slide on the left, it highlights that we're essentially working with two groups of data when we review our annual certification. First, we have the EEO Plan Data Analysis Summary that was prepared last year and described in the column to my left. This data set includes more detail than the snapshot that we have to report annually as part of our certification. The numbers from the Data Analysis Summary include more granular-level data for a longer period of time to provide a greater context of institutional trends. Additionally, this is the data set utilized to identify adverse impact and underrepresentation. The second set of data on the right side is the EEO data set that is required as part of our annual certification. Note that the data is broken out for a shorter period of time. It does not take into account an availability analysis, and is broken out by categories, specific job categories, instead of by unit. For our annual certification, we are essentially adding another year of data and reviewing data provided from the 24-25 fiscal year that's in the column to the right to determine whether there are any new trends or changes that emerge. There are a couple of terms of art that we discussed during last year's presentation, and that occur throughout our data analysis on EEO. The consultant completed what is called an availability analysis, which is essentially who is available to apply for positions at Peralta. This information was included in the executive summary and the data analysis that were included with last year's board items. The second term of art is the utilization analysis. This identifies those individuals who are available to work at Peralta, and in what percentage does Peralta actually employ them. The district is required to identify whether any group is either adversely impacted or underrepresented in the Peralta workforce. So when we look at data regarding who actually applies for work at Peralta as compared to who we hire, we look to determine whether there was an adverse impact or if there is a statistically significant difference from one category. To determine adverse impact, we are looking at every stage of the hiring process, from the initial applicant pool to the final selection. So it's broken out into six phases. Lastly, underrepresentation speaks to whether any monitored group is below 80% of the projected representation for that group and job category. So we are looking at whether, given a specific group's availability, do we employ them consistent with their availability in the local workforce. According to the data provided in the executive summary and data analysis included in the board item for last year's annual certification, there was no persistent pattern of adverse impact by race, ethnicity, or gender. The group analyses did, however, show underrepresentation for employees identifying as Latinx. The availability analysis indicated approximately 24.3% of individuals are available. However, the district only employs 18.3% in their total workforce. Based on these conclusions regarding adverse impact and underrepresentation, the district identified strategies in Component 13 that would be implemented to decrease these instances of underrepresentation. The executive summary and data sets that were used to identify adverse impact and underrepresentation are not actually part of our annual certification submission. Rather, the annual certification requires that we essentially add a new year, the 24-25 year of data, for six specific, sorry, for eight specific categories to the existing longitudinal data, and evaluate the impact of the pre-hiring, hiring, and post-hiring strategies in Component 13 in light of the new year's data. Here is the first set required for the annual certification. Our data must be organized by the specific job categories that are provided in Title V, and the current chart, which is part of the annual certification, shows how we have to break out the job applicant data by gender. When looking at this data, an interesting trend that emerged for the 24-25 year was an overall decrease in the number of applicants for all categories of jobs except part-time faculty. There were only 70 applicants for full-time faculty positions this past year as compared to 314 applicants in the previous year. This trend may have been created by the overall decrease in the number of positions that were posted during last fiscal year, and the potential impact of the reduction on force on recruitment efforts, but an important trend to note. Here is the second data set that is required for the annual certification. This information looks at applicants for positions at Peralta as disaggregated by race. This form is developed by the State Chancellor's Office, and districts are required to provide data aggregated in this way. So unfortunately, the data does not further break down some of the API data as previously requested because we are limited to the provided format. This data does include a snapshot of the 24-25 year. I would like to highlight again that there were significantly fewer applicants for full-time tenure-track positions. The percentage of applicants identifying as Latinx increased from the previous year. In the 24-25 year, approximately 12.9 of applicants, 12.9% of applicants, for tenured positions identified as Latinx. And the previous year, with three times as many applicants overall, only 9.9% of applicants for tenured positions identified as Latinx. Because this group is underrepresented in the overall workforce, an increase in the specific numbers of applicants is encouraging as it suggests that the strategies around targeted recruitment, as specified in Component 13, are having a positive impact. So we just reviewed our annual data for applicants. Now we are turning to employee data, meaning who we actually hire through the process. The current chart, which is part of the annual certification, provides employee data that is disaggregated by gender. As noted during the annual certification presentation last year, our longitudinal data does indicate that there are certain categories, such as classified position, in which males are underemployed, given the identified availability. However, we also note that this may simply reflect general industry patterns. Additionally, as national data trends indicate, a decrease in high school graduation rates for males and a resulting decrease in degrees being conferred by some males, the data may be more reflective of national trends in industry and higher education than any specific pattern that's just present within the Peralta workforce. This is another data set that is being given as part of our annual certification regarding employees. Despite last year's data indicating an increase in the number of applicants identifying as Latinx, last year's data did not reveal a similar increase in the number of employees actually hired into tenure-track positions. Accordingly, it is likely that this year's data would not alter any of the conclusions that we have regarding Latinx being an underrepresented group within our workforce. I do want to note that on this slide, the academic and tenured numbers were transpose with academic temporary. So the first row, it should be the number that's directly below it. I think the numbers were flipped. So for example, under academic tenured, the number for Latinx should be 5.7%, and academic temporary should be 6.7. So those numbers were transposed, but they're also available on the attachment that's with the board item, which looks like this, but hopefully a little bit larger. So the correct numbers are on here. It's just those two rows were transposed. Given the new data presented for the 24-25 year, the conclusions reached in the longitudinal analysis remain current. Specifically, there are still no present patterns of adverse impact. However, as we look at underrepresentation, there is still underrepresentation for employees identifying as Latinx. The data does reflect progress towards workforce diversity, as even with fewer applicants, the number of applicants in this unrepresented group increased, and the number of tenure faculty members identifying as Latinx has remained constant. Here are some of the findings from the more robust data set that were included in the executive summary, but not necessarily captured in the snapshots of the data that we just presented that are part of the annual certification data. First, there are two areas of underemployment when looking at the total workforce analysis. There are two categories where the district exceeds the estimated availability. It is still recommended that the district prioritize recruitment for applicants who are underemployed, and these findings support the efforts that we've identified in the strategies component, which we will review next. The next section of our annual certification is the EEO Strategies Update. And so essentially, based upon the longitudinal data analysis, the district identified certain EEO strategies it would implement to decrease any adverse impact and decrease underrepresentation, and overall enhance EEO within the district. Section C of the annual certification requires the district to review the EEO strategies that are being implemented and determine whether revisions are currently required. After the data component for the certification, we are required to identify any progress we've made on the strategies we identified in Component 13 of our plan. Our strategies were organized into three separate phases: pre-hiring, hiring, and post-hiring strategies. We have made progress on all three of our pre-hiring strategies as we offered approximately six EEO trainings for people who elect to participate on hiring and selection committees. Additionally, the district webpage has been updated to include information devoted to EEO, and the district continues to inquire about candidates' commitment to DEIA during the application process through application questions and questions in the interview rounds. We have also reported progress on the identified hiring strategies the district identified in its EEO plan. Some of the pre-hiring strategies are also embedded within the hiring strategies as it pertains to training. In addition to training for all employees interested in participating in hiring and selection committees, we also held training specifically for human resources and managers on EEO. We also held a six-hour Train the Trainer module on becoming an EEO representative for all interested parties. The district has commissioned a comp and class study with McKnight, and part of that comp and class study will review our job descriptions, so we are in the process of updating some outdated job descriptions. We will also schedule an opportunity for the board to undergo EEO training, and we are in the process of training up human resources and employee relations staff. Our staff also underwent a robust training regarding DEIA and unconscious bias, and some of our HR staff also attended a training series on equity in hiring. Lastly, the district has committed itself to two post-hiring strategies. Thank you. The district has committed itself to two post-hiring strategies. The district has committed itself to two post-hiring strategies, including conducting surveys and conducting exit interviews. During year one, we did not circulate employee surveys, surveys, as the timing seemed inappropriate given the work that we were doing with the reduction in force. However, we have updated the resignation and retire webpage to include an online exit interview survey. So, of the strategies that the district identified in its EEO plan, there has been significant progress on most of the strategies. The next section of our annual EEO certification requires that we, we, uh, provide information on the district's response to formal harassment and discrimination complaints. For the 24-25 year, the district had an increase in the number of complaints from seventeen in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five in twenty-four, twenty-five. While this is an uptick from the previous year, I would like to note that this is likely attributable to multiple complaints being filed by single complainants against, against multiple respondents. This is also highlighted on the next slide. This level of detail that's provided on the slide is not required as part of our annual EEO certification, but I did want to highlight that fourteen complaints district-wide involved complaints that were filed by one person against multiple respondents. It is worth noting, when compared to last year, that there was also an uptick in discrimination complaints based on disability as a protected class. For twenty-three, twenty-four, there were only two complaints involving allegations of disability discrimination. This is a trend that we're looking into, but it's our understanding that this is a statewide trend and not unique to Peralta. We are also looking at restructuring the reasonable accommodations process and expanding the number of individuals in employee relations trained on the interactive process to improve the quality of the experience. Further, we anticipate that the upcoming transition to ADP for leaves management may assist in coordinating processes that have contributed to the uptick in these complaints. It is also worth noting that the number of non-employment complaints increased from five to nine. We are evaluating this trend as well, but it currently appears that the uptick is attributable, again, to complainants filing complaints against multiple respondents regarding the same incident or same set of facts. The final component of the annual certification requires us to identify expenditures of EEO funds. The district has consistently focused the expenditure of EEO for, funds on advertising services and training. While the district has unexpendated EEO allocations, it is important to note that during the 24-25 school year, the district utilized EEO innovative best practices grant funds to provide more robust training for hiring and selection committees, trainings for human resources and employee relations, trainings for managers, EEO representative training, and development of a selection committee chair handbook. Our goal with the use of grant funds was to avoid using the one-time dollars to create ongoing expenses. Therefore, ongoing expenses such as advertisement costs, recruiting costs, and accessibility software for employees with vision and hearing impairments continue to be funded with the allocated EEO funds. With the unexpendated allocation, the district will continue to focus the expenditure of its funds on advertising services to widely advertise vacancies. We do want to note this cost decrease during the 24-25 year because there were fewer positions being posted and recruitment was interrupted during the reduction in force. The district anticipates using unexpendated allocations to further the district efforts for targeted recruitment, building internal capacity for training, and enhancing our focus on retention efforts with the support of the Classified Development Series and the Faculty Diversity Internship Program. These marks the end of the components of our annual certification, but before I close, I would like to bring forth some recommendations to focus areas for our EU work during year two of our EEO plan. First, we recommend that we maintain component thirteen as written. The current strategies are designed to stress the identified underrepresentation, and since the data shows that despite an overall decrease in the number of applicants, the number of applicants identifying as Latinx has remained flat, not decreased. So there's no reason to believe that the current efforts, if enhanced, uh, will not continue to help. Starting in approximately one year, we will begin engaging efforts to revise our EEO plan and component thirteen to meet the March twenty, twenty-seven expiration of the current plan. So it would be more appropriate to begin efforts to revise the pre-hiring, hiring, and post-hiring strategies in a year as we will be looking to renew our EEO plan. I believe that at that time, it would be beneficial to start focusing on looking at more robust inclusion, uh, by our students in the pre-hiring strategies. For example, we can examine building out a student workers pathway to employment with Peralta that includes training and mentoring for student workers, along with an opt-in for Peralta job postings, and even recommendations to support with satisfac- satisfaction of minimal, minimum qualifications for Peralta positions. The second recommendation is to develop a spending plan for EEO plant, for EEO funds, so there is an opportunity for clear alignment with our strategic plan to advance student access, equity, and success, to engage and leverage partners, to build programs of distinction, strengthen accountability, innovation, and collaboration, and develop and manage resources to advance our mission. A plan would create better alignment with our partners, including the Faculty Diversity Internship Program and Classified Professionals Training needs. The third recommendation is to continue regular training for selection and hiring committees as this is one of the best ways to prevent any adverse impact from developing within the hiring phases. The fourth recommendation is EEO training for the board. The fifth recommendation is already in process but worth highly, highlighting, as a more efficient system will hopefully improve our current employee experience, which is part of our EEO plan, to retain our existing diverse workforce. Similarly, our sixth recommendation is already in process, and our union partners have supported moving this work for, forward. We believe that the development of an Ombud's Office will support improvement of the employee experience and hopefully decrease the volume of disputes or concerns that are then absorbed by the complaint process. Lastly, we recommend developing an online catalog of EEO trainings so that employees have access to such trainings at their convenience. We recommend revising the EEO web, webpage to include an online catalog of EEO trainings and other resources such as EEO toolkits that employees can access at their convenience. I believe that giving employees access to training at times that are convenient for them will improve engagement and participation. Any questions?
Thank you.
For the president, I move approval of the, um, EEO certification form.
Yes, I have one question.
Wait, wait, so get a second and then your discussion. So you've got a second?
Yeah.
And then now call for discussion.
So, um, on the page applicant job category by race, ethnicity for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Sorry, that's applicant?
Applicant job category.
Yes.
So by far, the largest percentage is, uh, unknown or blank.
Yes.
And I'm just, uh, wondering how that impacts your overall, uh, statistical numbers if, if people aren't stating, I mean, if your largest category is unknown or blank, it seems like it's got to skew things in one way or another.
Yes, and I wouldn't say that it skews it, it's just, we have the data that we have. If people aren't willing to identify a particular, um, category, then we have to kind of sit with those numbers. I still think that based upon what we have in terms of people who are willing to identify, that we have a pretty accurate, uh, picture of what's happening within our workforce.
Okay, thank you. Um, trustee, yes?
And just to follow up his, these numbers, is that similar to state as well to have the unknowns?
And you know, I, I can check that, I'm not sure what the state shows in terms of the number of, um, unknown.
I'm just following up on his, so if he was.
No, I'm just, uh, I just, I mean, in some ways, it must impact your ability to determine if you're successfully recruiting a wide range of applicants. Um, and I don't, there's no way to deal with that because if people don't want to state it, they're not going to state, but, uh, I don't know, it's, uh, it's, it seems like it's got to make your job more difficult.
It does not make my job more difficult, but I do think that overall, that given the numbers that we have compared to some of our other sister colleges, we have a very diverse workforce, um, kind of regardless of whether you take into consideration that particular category. Also, I think in terms of our numbers for the availability analysis, we do pretty well in terms of what's available in, in our geographical area and the percentages for employment based on the availability analysis.
Okay, thank you. Any further question?
Thank you. This might be a question for the chancellor, and I know I've asked you this before. Um, thank you very much for this presentation, it's really helpful. Um, can you talk a little bit more? I know we talked a bit in the presentation about, um, underrepresentation of Latinx employees. Can you both or chancellor speak to any additional recruitment, um, activities you may have to kind of close that gap? I know you mentioned a few, but yeah, I just would be, a little bit more detailed would be great.
And so, so far, all of our targeted recruitment efforts are outlined in component thirteen as well as our EEO plan, and so they most significantly revolve around, I can't remember what component it is in the EEO plan, but reaching out to local, um, groups, nonprofits, that can help us create a better pipeline, um, also getting the word out, a lot of our target, targeted advertisement, look at posting in places where we're likely to attract applicants that are in that underrepresented, uh, in that underrepresented pool.
So in addition, we're also continuing to support the Faculty Diversity Internship Program, which was the largest area, right, where we lacked sort of, um, um, representation in those underrepresented groups, and so working with Vance and Winn, Dr. Winn, who is the FDP, FDIP coordinator, has been one of those processes. We're also working and partnering with the Los Rios Community College District on a state, uh, Northern California proposal to really work with Sacramento State University and others to outreach more robustly to graduate schools that are looking at, at, um, underrepresented communities being in the pipeline and working towards understanding what it means to be a community college faculty member, giving like professional development opportunities and opportunities for coursework. So, again, this is an area where we need and will continue to do, uh, more outreach, but that's one example of the work.
Thank you both.
And I know trustee, uh, Gonzo, uh, board vice president Gonzalez Brito has her hand up as well.
Hi, thank you so much, um, director, for this report, um, really appreciate it. And I guess I'm just to follow up on trustee Delphine Polk's question, I wonder about the gap in the, it sounds like the outreach is working, like we're getting more applicants, and I count that as a win. I'm wondering what the gap is that's not leading to increased hiring for the Latinx, uh, population, and if there's any analysis that you can share with us about that.
And so keep in mind, the increase in the number is something that we just saw in this most current year. We have our, uh, longitudinal data, uh, that was prepared last year, and looking at the process from what happens between applicants and actual hirings, that's when you're doing that analysis around adverse impact. And so interestingly enough, the previous analysis did not find that there was any adverse impact happening between when unrep- the underrepresented group applied for positions and actually making it through to being hired. And so that would usually be where you would capture that data, and what part are you having problems? Is it just a lack of applicants? Is it somewhere between, um, the initial application and the screening that you're losing a statistically significant number of people? And so the, uh, adverse impact analysis did not point out kind of where that is happening, where we're losing applicants between when they apply and who's actually hired. So there's not a consistent pattern in terms of, it appears that there's anything that we're doing or that's occurring through those six phases that are resulting in an adverse impact. So we're unclear specifically like what part of the phase, um, underrepresented applicants are being, um, phased out. So we would definitely need to, when we're going to be renewing our, or creating our new EEO plan, starting late next year, be, um, have a consultant, or if we're able to do it internally, we will, go back to review the data based upon the last three years to determine whether or not there is any update regarding adverse impact, or who we're being, who's being identified as underrepresented, given three years of updated data.
Yeah, um, yeah, so that, that, um, that just raises more questions about it, and so if, yeah, I look forward to further conversation and, um, learning more about, because it's, if we're not seeing the uptick in hiring, um, I'm not sure what strategies we need to put in place to address it. So, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, that would be, um, part of what would come out during the analysis of our phase data, and so from the phase data that we have, there wasn't any like persistent pattern where we could document that it was statistically significant that people, although they were applicants, they were being kind of struck, needed out throughout the process. So it may just be naturally you have people who apply, but then don't end up, you know, accepting an opportunity for an interview, or they're offered a position but then don't accept it. So things like that also happen pretty regularly, um, on, on our side of the house.
So we'll continue to do analysis, um, board vice president, and certainly will be part of the phase discussion. The trustee's questions are really helpful in helping us, um, consider how we look at, um, our plan and our, um, our opportunities going forward.
Thank you, trustee, can, you want to hand a question?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank, thank you and your staff for this. I, uh, I've got a, a number of questions, and I'm trying to put my head together in some organized way. First of all, you're using the term adverse impact and, um, and underrepresentation, and that, that's clearly a term of art. It means a particular thing, and I misunderstood what it meant, uh, you know, as I was reading it, but as I'm hearing you talk about it, it sounds like, so correct me, please, it sounds like you got a, an applicant pool, you got people who are applying, and then somewhere along the way, you get the result, and the adverse impact is that there is something in that process that is adversely impacting the outcome, and you're saying that our analysis can't determine that there is anything there, and so there's no adverse impact, even if there's underrepresentation. Is that a correct understanding of that term?
That's correct. So the adverse impact analysis looks specifically at who's applying.
Yeah.
Regardless of their availability in the workforce, just who is applying. And between when people are applying, as they've worked their way through the six phases of the hiring process, whether you have the paper screening, the actual interviews, the second interview, things like that, are you noticing a statistical trend in terms of a particular group may be paper screened out? Like you have a lot of them in the applicant pool, they're applying, but then somehow the way that you're screening, your paper screening, maybe you're looking at minimum quals or something like that, they don't make it to that next phase. What's happening at that snapshot? So you're looking at it over six different phases to figure out what's happening in between kind of the bookends of when you apply and when you're hired. So what happens kind of through that phase?
Yeah.
The underrepresentation has to do with who's actually available and applying, to apply for the jobs.
Okay.
So they don't hold it against you in terms of if you're only getting six applicants, if that's what's available, then that's okay. You're not looking at that in terms of the adverse impact. You are looking at it in terms of your underrepresentation. Who's actually available to apply for your jobs, and do they actually end up working there? Because the thought is that there should be some synergy between what's available in your area and who you're actually hiring.
Yeah, okay, so that's, uh, that, that was super helpful clarification, and in some ways, it sort of validates, uh, you know, there's this critical race theory kind of understanding that, you know, a lot of racism isn't some intentional process, it's just baked into the system, a lot of times it's invisible, you don't even know it's there, um, and what we're seeing is that it's in the process of just getting people to apply for the job. Pay attention, come, work. Pay attention, come work here. And so, now I want to focus on, one part of it has to do with our job descriptions and the minimum calls. I'm really pleased that in some of our job descriptions, it's not just the boilerplate sensitivity to, understanding of blah, blah, blah. Everybody's seen that language, and it, it often doesn't mean that much. But in a couple of our job positions, the emoji coordinator, and I think the diversity internship program, the language is different. And the language there specifically says that what is, what is a minimum qualification is applicant must have a demonstrated cultural competency, and then sensitivity to et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't look like that's in our other job descriptions. I was looking at like the part-time position for history, or for the nursing position that we're looking at right now. Why aren't we making this a minimum call across the board? Demonstrated cultural competence. Given our student body and the needs of this district, doesn't that seem like it should be a minimum call? So, that what we would be doing then is screening out people who didn't meet that minimum call, and presumably, I think, it would, it would help us, one, communicate, this is who we are, and this is who we want to come. But then also, in the process of hiring, as we were scoring people, the people who had demonstrated, better demonstrated multicultural skills and competency, not just sort of aspirational, those people with demonstrated skills would get ranked higher and then would be moved along further. Is there a reason that we don't use that higher standard just across the board?
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons. First, you have to look at, usually, what you're including in terms of the minimum qualifications, you're not supposed to be creating kind of artificial barriers for people who would be qualified to apply. For example, one of the exercises that we've been doing with HR staff is looking at, what are the questions that we're asking, and what are they designed to achieve? So, asking someone to demonstrate something versus, you know, a willingness to learn. Those are two very different things. And so, sometimes if you're asking someone to have demonstrated something, you're then saying that they haven't had the, maybe the opportunity yet to, to demonstrate that in a way. And so, you may be weeding certain people out who really would, if they were in the right situation, have an opportunity to develop and to demonstrate those skills. So, you're very careful about how you word things, so that then there isn't a barrier to entry. Also, I will say that statistics have shown that for male applicants, they're less likely to apply for a job when they don't feel certain that they meet all of the minimum requirements. And so, having language where you're requiring that someone have already demonstrated something versus showing a sensitivity to or ability to, you know, interact with a multicultural group, that's very different in terms of who you would then maybe inadvertently weed out in terms of who would apply because they feel like they're qualified for it. So, one of the trainings that we did with the HR staff just revolved around, we need to be more thoughtful about, one, what minimum qualifications are we putting in our job descriptions? For example, if you have a minimum call, if someone has to have a doctorate to teach a certain course, are you then missing people who have masters, who have classroom experience, who would be qualified to teach the class, but they don't have the doctorate? So, what are you trying to, to get from your applicant pool? And be thoughtful about what you're identifying and how you identify minimum qualifications. Also, I think that part of the work that we were doing with HR also revolved around, once you get to the actual in-person interviews, redefining the questions that you're asking applicants, so that then you get the information that you actually want. Again, if you're wording it, you know, state of time that you have demonstrated these things, what if the person hasn't had an opportunity to do those things yet, but they actually, if they were in the situation, would be very good at it? Then you're preventing people from, who don't already have the experience, from having the opportunity to develop it and to demonstrate that they do have the aptitude to do that.
And trustee, may I just also, so I went on the people admin site and looked at nursing and a couple of other positions that are currently posted for the district. I do want to say that the minimum qualification, all of them say applicant must have demonstrated cultural competency, sensitivity to and understanding of the diverse academic, socioeconomic, cultural disability, and ethnic backgrounds of community college staff, faculty, and students. So, I, I just did a cursory look on like four or five of them. So, I, I believe it is one of the minimum qualifications we do have district-wide for our positions.
Okay, I'm, I'll be happy to be corrected. I'm just looking at that job description and reading the minimum calls, and I just see item six, understanding of, sensitivity to, respect for diverse academic, blah, 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 but it doesn't have the demonstrated cultural competence. But I, you can show me later. So, Director Epps, I, I appreciate that. And maybe people will come here and they will learn on the job to deal with the multiplicity of students that we have and each other, and, and I get that. Look, not everybody has had that opportunity. I'm thinking, though, that in the situations where it's not written as a minimum call, and maybe it is, maybe, maybe I'm just looking in the wrong spot or something like that, but that it could then at least be written in as a desirable. And then again, when we're scoring, the scoring is really clear. You don't have that skill compared to this other person. Here's my other thought, and I'm just wondering about this. Given the paucity of, of Latinx employees in the district, you know, sort of across the board, but in particular, I'm noticing, you know, in, in the classroom, I'm wondering whether there's some way in which we highlight specific competence for Latinx students as a desirable, and then draw more people who are saying, oh, that place is particularly interested in this. And then we're boosting that population, not artificially at all, but because it's an actual need in the district, and because we are underrepresented in those areas, it's a special institutional need. So, I just put that out for your consideration. You're the expert in this area. I'm, I'm board member. It strikes me, though, that that might be another way of doing a special outreach in that area.
Yeah, trustee Gonzalez, you want, like, again, really great recommendations and feedback. I will offer, you know, when I do look at our job announcements and things, many districts have moved to saying, this is what our student population looks like. And so, they list the demographics. We are looking for individuals who know and serve and write. Latin, Latin A students are our largest, you know, student demographic group. And so, you know, showing that shows the community that we serve, who they should be ready for to educate if they're coming here as faculty members or working in administration or classified professionals. So, sometimes the districts will do, like we did this in other districts I've worked in, we've done a full, like a fuller sort of thing about values of the district and things like that, as just promotional parts to explain context for when they're applying, and then you have things like the minimum qualifications that we have, so that there's opportunities for them to also be thinking about and seeing themselves reflected, hopefully, in that population to come. So, there are some ways to do it where you're identifying not just a certain group, but like really the diversity in this district. And so, I think these are things that we can work on with Director Epps, our Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, and the team in Human Resources to think about expanding what we're doing in terms of the training and work they're doing there.
And in addition to that, when we, those of us who've served on hiring committees, you know, you've got a scoring sheet, and then you move forward the people who have higher scores. If you have an opportunity to make that an official part of the evaluation, it takes people with skills in that area and moves them up on the hiring, in the hiring process.
I definitely think there's nuance with that. So, right, and so, I think as Director Epps talked about, we want to be really thoughtful and nuanced about, sometimes we think we want X, and we want to make sure that the door isn't closed to people who haven't had opportunity, and that's what the pipeline issue is, right? Is sometimes having the opportunity to get your foot in the door and do particular things. And so, I think that's the balance for us. But districts do redacted screening, they do lots of things to allow like places to be, and so that may be a place in our next plan that we get to. And some of these best practices are really helping sort of minimize bias and things like that throughout the process, so that we can get there and see how that might work for us. So, I'm excited that we're really now have a good set of data to begin the work. We'll be looking at the more longitudinal work to develop the next plan forward, and I think many of these ideas are excellent. I know Vice President Gonzalez-Brito, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, thank you. I was just thinking, as you were talking about adverse impact and, and breaking down what that means. So, I'm wondering if through that process of hiring, sorry, of application to hiring, there could be various things that can happen along the way that result in somebody not being hired. They could have found a job somewhere else. They, what, you know, whatever those reasons are. But I guess I'm wondering if, do we have any data on what percentage of applicants for our Latinx drop along the way to being offered the job versus other demographic groups? Does that make sense?
So, the phased analysis in terms of who's dropping out as the reason for not progressing through?
Who, who are we losing along the, what percentage of, of, of potential employees are we losing between the application to the hiring? And is that percentage greater amongst Latinx than other demographics, or is it about the same?
And I can't recall off the top of my head, but that information, that analysis, is part of the executive summary and data analysis that were included in the last year's EEO annual certification as part of the adverse impact analysis, where it shows by percentage versus who's, who actually applies and who's actually hired. It shows that whole phased analysis, but I can't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but it is attached to the agenda item, I think it was October 8th of last year's board meeting.
Okay, I'll take a look. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez, you had one more.
Thank you. The other thing I really appreciated about this report is the longitudinal picture. And what would be helpful in the presentation is to have that on a graph, so I'm not looking at all the different little cells and trying to figure out like how this one versus this one versus this one. And then maybe having a graph that has the applicant pool and the, the employee data, so that we're seeing is there some change. Anyway, a super helpful presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Call the question.
Oh, can we call the roll?
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli-Villarreal?
Yes.
Delphine, trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Director Epps.
Nine point two?
Thank you, Board President. Item nine two point two reflects our ongoing commitment to upgrading instructional labs, student services, and academic services by replacing outdated computers in, for employees and for our students. The request supports the five-year replacement cycle for employing lab computers aligned with our adopted technology master plan and our adopted five-year replacement cycle, where we replace about 20% of these computers each year. So, approval of the agreement will allow us to procure the equipment, and once we receive it, the IT team will coordinate with each college on lab replacements and employee distributions.
So, then I have a motion made by trustee Gonzalez, you want?
I have a question. I just want to...
So, hold on one second. So, we have a, go ahead, Board President.
Oh, pardon? We have a first and second, yes.
I think we had a motion and a second already before you go into discussion. That's part of rubber rules of order.
I just want to look at the amount, 1.9 million. That's correct. And that's 20% of the computers district-wide. Do you know how many computers that happens to be up the top?
So, it's computers and equipment, so I'll ask CTO Muele, who's on a line. Student trustee is asking the number.
No, thank you, Chancellor. We have around 4,500 computers, and, and that includes laptop and technology labs, and the, the computer in the instructional labs, and faculty computer also.
Okay, thank you.
Can you answer your question? Okay. Any further discussion? Can we call a question?
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli-Villarreal?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Announcements. Can the board clerk, do you read any announcements for tonight?
Trustee reports, are there any trustee reports?
Ah, sorry. Board of trustee reports, are there any trustee reports?
Student trustee Malik?
I, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, so far, in the past two weeks, Leo and I have worked together to get student appointments for the district shared governance committees. So far, we had 12 spots, and we were able to fill those 12 spots, and we have updated the chancellor with those students. Additionally, moving forward with that, we are working, we are working on...
Take your class, okay.
Additionally, we are working on getting student representation on three of the new task forces as part of Pralto's Transformation Plan, with the priority of getting a diverse of students from each college in our district. Moving forward with that, we met with BCC President Dr. Denise Richardson this past week to discuss the goals for this year, and we also want to expand to Presidents Atlini, COA, and Merit, so that we can have an idea of what is going on at each campus and work to, you know, transform and see students really engage at each of these campuses. And additionally, on my end, I am excited to start working in the Student Success and Enrollment, Enrollment Management Committee, which is starting this Friday, especially with its core goal as part of Pralto's Transformation Plan. Ex-Student Trustee Sophia Parbajani has assisted onboarding me to the committee with notes on what the committee did last year.
Awesome. Just to add, I'd like to thank Denise Richardson again for inviting us to the fundraiser. That was absolutely fantastic to see all these people, you know, donating, donating money to Pralto. And I, if I'm, if I'm being honest, I didn't know there was a foundation, so that's great to know that there's a support base of a lot of people, so that's, that's all.
So, I have a couple of comments. Number one, on the foundation event yesterday, well, the work actually started Sunday when we were hauling everything up there and didn't finish till we got everything back today. And in between, a lot happened. It was amazing, the turnout. I think the chancellor has a second career as an auctioneer in her spare time, but it, she got great results on the items she auctioned off. And also, thanks to Chief Operating Officer Greg Nielsen, he made some very important contributions in terms of bringing in sponsors that really helped support our fundraising efforts. The second item is around the horticulture, the center. What was clear to me, I think, more than anything, was the passion of the faculty, and I probably assume some students and staff, in the creation of the place. You could see their efforts in the design, and maybe set a standard for the type of input we can have from our, our students and classified and faculty that are working in these programs and participating in building the design. And I'm really looking forward to the ribbon cutting out at the transportation center. One of the things I noticed in the Alameda President's report was the fact that we're now, that Alameda is now the transportation center for the Bay ACC district, which is consortium, which is 29 colleges. So, that's certainly an important feather in the cap and boost to the transportation facility, so that's great. Thank you. Meetings adjourned?
I got a report.
Okay, go. Okay, go.
Thank you. Let's see, yeah, going to that horticultural center was really impressive. And what was, part of what was impressive about it was how many years it took and the persistence of people to get it done. It's really beautiful. If you haven't been up there, go. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. The classroom design is especially impressive. This past week, I attended my first meeting of the California Community College League Advisory Committee on Ed Services. I have complained bitterly for, about the programming at league events for years because it's like just talking heads. And I'm thinking, we're educators, we, we could do better. We could do better programming that was kind of like more engaging. So they, they, they appointed me. Yeah.
That is brilliant.
They appointed me.
They don't know what they're getting.
And they're like, they're like 13 trustees and classified workers and so forth. And it was actually, it was, it was a good first meeting. I'm excited about it. And speaking of the league, this past spring, I put in a proposal for the fall convention to highlight what we're doing here in shared governance. And so Tishada and Matt, our chancellor, along with Ron Gerhart down from Chabos Las Pacitas, we're going to be doing a panel on like, why does shared governance make sense? Why, why can, can we not fight with each other? And can we figure out how to get buy-in and, and kind of lead with love, purpose, passion? Possibility, the whole thing. Right? Anyway, they accepted it. I'm super excited about it. And I'm beginning to pull together a panelist to begin to like just sort of percolate it. And I swear, it's not going to just be talking heads. I've got to figure out how to, in an hour and 10 minutes, get engagement. So I'm excited. All right, you can close.
Okay.
Sorry, one more, one more real quick before you adjourn. I'd just like to say that me and I both forgot about this. But we have our tour on Friday. We're going to all the campuses except for BCC because we're there all the time. But Merit, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's Merit in the morning, I think Laney midday, and then Alameda in the afternoon, something like that. So if anyone watching, you'd like to come say hello. Very open. We're very, we're very willing to talk to you if you're a student, so that's all. Yeah.
Do you have anything? Okay. Now we can adjourn the meeting. Is that okay, Nikki?
No, no, no. So, so Board President, we'll go ahead and have a board clerk read the announcement, and then I will close the meeting for you. How's that?
Here are the announcements for this evening. Love your future. Enrollment is open for fall short-term classes that start in September and October. Visit the Peralta website to start the application or enrollment process. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee will meet here in the boardroom tomorrow, September 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Chancellor Gilkerson and the District Service Center Leadership Team will be visiting each of the colleges this week, including Laney on Wednesday at 12:30 PM at the Laney Forum, Berkeley City College on Wednesday at 3:00 PM in the BCC auditorium, Merit on Thursday at 12:30 PM in the Neatun Seal Student Lounge, and College of Alameda on Thursday at 3:00 PM in Building H, Room 153. We hope you can join us in person for these important conversations. There's a lot more going on. For additional events, please visit the Peralta website and scroll down to the Events Across the District section.
Chancellor?
Board President, I'd like to close tonight's meeting with a moment of silence in the memory of Sam Knox, a utility engineer and plumber with 20 years of service to Laney College before retiring in July. Sadly, Sam passed away in August. I sent an email out to the, to the community, and I got so many incredible stories about Sam and the impact he had, taking care of the cosmetology, coming to the dance department, greeting people, really just being, really funny stories too, about how lovely guardian for many, many on our campuses, at Laney College. So our condolences to the Knox family. Sam was a deeply respected member of the facilities team, known for his dedication and his warm spirit. Please join me in a moment of silence honoring Sam Knox.
Close the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you.